Please call the meeting to order. Please rise for the flag pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
Stands.
To the Republic for which it stands.
Under God.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
For all.
Liberty and justice for all.
That was awkward.
That's a tricky thing to do.
Next month will be a lot better. Let's go with that, okay? We can only hope. Alrighty, approval of the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda.
And who's?
Mike Flynn.
Mike Flynn? And we have a second.
Second.
Who said that?
Arlie.
I have the discussion, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, Lynn, Lynn has something.
All right.
Sorry, I was on mute. And, you know, I try to read these carefully and slow and and does such a wonderful job. They're so comprehensive. But I got to a part where I had trouble understanding it. And I thought, well, if I have trouble understanding, having been there, it's worth addressing.
Stop Lynn, Lynn. We're working on the agenda.
Oh, sorry. That was a second by Mike. I'm just trying to make notes here.
No.
I made a motion.
Mike made the motion, Arlie seconded.
Arlie, I'm sorry, Arlie, okay. Gotcha.
And we'll get to you in a minute, Lynn, okay? Right now we're moving the agenda. And I think it was nice, simple and sweet this time, so. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Okay, passed. Approval of minutes. Lynn?
Okay, I guess I was jumping ahead. It refers to the second docket for 152102 on page nine. Under conditions, the first one, I just had a really difficult time reading the sentence. And I think where, you know, it says, "The owners of the property to which this conditional conditional use permit is issued will abide by all representations and commitments made during the permitting process as well as before the planning commission." And, and I just got hung up on during the permitting process because that's what we do. But I don't know if it should read during other permitting processes? Because she had already worked with MINDOT and some other groups, DNR?
Are we talking about, sorry, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, so I get on the right page here with the screen share. Are we talking about the minutes from the last meeting? Or are we talking about a current petition?
Last meeting. Last meeting.
Okay. So there are, there are permits that are sometimes issued from our department that happen afterward. There could be a land disturbance permit or other kinds of permits. Once you folks advise the county board as to your decision and they approve a petition, there could be permits associated with it. Is that, does that get over?
Yeah, yeah, it just, it just doesn't read well during the permitting process as well as before the planning commission. Because before can be construed, you know, in a different way there contextually. But, but yeah, I assumed it was other permitting processes as well as before the planning commission. But maybe I'm, maybe I'm nitpicking.
If there's a reword that would, that would help to sum things up more appropriately, you could recommend it to Mr. Chair and Lynn. And we're happy to amend the minutes as this group sees fit.
We actually can't amend the minutes because those are based on the findings of fact and the conditions, and those have already been approved. So that cannot be amended at this time. However, and that is standard language that's been in every findings of fact and staff report for a while. So if there are suggestions for revising that, we can suggest it for conditions on the current permit, but we can't reword it in the minutes.
But what if they want to, what if they don't want to approve the minutes without?
But the minutes are what was approved. What was approved was that condition in particular. So you can't reword that condition because it's a copy and paste from the approved findings of fact.
It's under the conditions. It's under the conditions. Okay, I understand that. And she did have several permits before she permissioned, so I'll keep that in mind for future. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the minutes? Or else we're looking for a motion?
I have a motion to approve of that.
Who said that?
Arlie.
Oh, Arlie, Arlie made a motion. And Mike Flynn's?
Mike Flynn seconded it.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion passed. New business. First thing is petitions. Docket number PC 052021.
That is me, Mr. Chair.
Megan is up.
All right, I'll, I'll put your, your presentation up, Megan.
Thank you. In reference to tonight's petition, we have Arlen Ostring on the line. You can see Arlen is here. He is from Edge Consulting Engineers. All right, so the petition we're looking at is a CUP request by Wisconsin DOT submitted by Edge Consulting Engineers to allow replacement of an existing communication tower off of County One. That request is pursuant to chapter 10.4.6.5 of our zoning ordinance. And the purpose is for emergency management response. It's located on County Road One. If you're familiar, there has been a tower there. The site's been in operation since the mid 1960s. Go ahead and forward. It was purchased from the Army Corps in 2018. And if you look in the packet, you'll see wording in that deed that outlines the use specifically for emergency management response, which is what the nature of this request is. That tower, there we go. That tower, the existing facility on the left, you can see the footprint. It is currently a guide wire tower at 260 feet. The entire site is about four and a half. But the actual footprint of that facility is about 100 by 100 with about a 90-foot square fence yard. On the right, that proposed upgrade on the right, you can see how the proposal has been overlaid on the existing footprint. So instead of the guide wire tower, this is going to be a self-supported structural tower. I'm getting some feedback. If, if you don't mind, if you could put yourself on mute. There we go. So the proposed upgrade is the same footprint. The main difference is that there will not be those wires that are strung out from that guide wire tower. And it'll be a self-supported tower that will propose to be 20 feet taller than the existing tower. There'll also be a new building to, and facility for storage of equipment. And that's outlined with the blue dots on the right side there in the photo. Yep. There will be an upgrade to the fencing and the gates. But the approach and the driveway will remain the same. Go ahead and forward. Because there is so much material coming down and, and the height of that tower, we have asked that a deconstruction plan to address the safety of that tower coming down as well as traffic control be in place. And that a recycling plan is submitted to let us know what, how, and where they, they plan on recycling as much of that material as they can. And that would all happen prior to the removal of that tower or, or equipment. All right, like I had said before, that the new communication site is going to house a new radio comm shed with a backup generator system. And that site will be secured with fencing gates and padlock. This is a little bit of a, a better close-up on what that site will contain. Go ahead. All right, here's a, a better view on the side of what self, or rather a freestanding tower looks like compared to a guy wire. The guide wire tower is a narrower tower, less of a visual impact on the skyline than this thicker, more robust freestanding tower. And then the difference would be the height is the structure itself will be 20 feet taller than the existing tower. And then above that, the additional antenna heights measure just under 300 feet. So 297 feet. Go ahead. Proximity to the other structures in the area. Just to the east lies one residence. You can see by that line, it's right at about 300 feet. So almost within a, a fall range, I guess you could say, within the tower or, or just beyond that. And then another ag building lies southeast of that at about 350 feet. Both of these structures are owned by the same landowner. And then you can see that County Road One lies just to the south of that, about 180 feet from the tower. Go ahead. New Hartford Township was contacted and did not have any comments regarding this Wisconsin DOT request. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And technical questions can also be directed to Arlen as well.
Thank you, Megan. I do have a question. I thought when we put built a tower, it had to be so many feet from the road? Or is this grandfathered in? Or is that towers? Because I thought it had to be its height from the road.
I, I missed your question. I'm sorry, there was some banging in the background. You, you thought that that tower had to be, could you just repeat that?
Yes, I thought the tower had to be, I thought it was one and a half times its height from distance from the road. Is this one grandfathered in because of its age? Or is that only for a different towers? Or what's the deal with that?
I did not see one and a half the distance. What I did see is a limit to 300 feet. I guess, was that an ordinance? That, or ordinance reference that you had seen that?
Well, I know when we'd put up the wind generators, that's what it was. Because it was a tower, it was a, you know, it was a, then it had to be one and a half times its height from the road or one time or whatever it was. But I just thought this was awful close to the road. But it's been there for 50 years already.
Yeah, I, in this case, that's, that's how I analyzed it, was that it was in the same footprint as the existing tower. So I did not, I wasn't aware of that one and a half for the, the wind towers. You know, a part of this and recommended in the staff report is that we don't really have a specific comm site or communication site guidance within our ordinance for either telecom or radio. So that would be something to, to look at.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Megan?
I guess. Mark.
Louis, okay, Louis, speak up.
My, my question is, is the FAA got any, or not, the FFA's got any regulations on it on the height because of the airplanes?
They do, and a part of the conditions for the permit would be compliance with, with the FAA. FAA. Yes.
Arlie, do you have a question?
Yeah, Megan, do you, do you know what kind of area this tower covers? I mean, is it mostly in that area? Or is it go, how far else?
Yeah, I, I was really interested in Ben Klinger's response to the inquiry. And I'm just going to pull his notes up really quick. And I'm just going to kind of give you a general answer. And then Arlen, if you have a specifics about your project. Let's see here. Well, I guess, I guess Ben's comments were more of why they cited it on our side so that, that Wisconsin is able to get back up into their valleys from the Minnesota side of the river. So physical proximity would be line of sight up into their valleys from the Minnesota side. But perhaps Arlen Ostring, if you could help me out on that. Mr. Chair, if you wanted to. I'm not sure if you need to address him first or if Arlen can pop in.
Well, yeah, I guess if he's got something to say about it, that'd be fine.
Sure, that, so I'm Arlen Ostring. Actually, on the line also is Logan Zinsley. He's with the DOT and he's in their network operations area. So he might be able to answer some specific questions as well. But yeah, I did see in the staff report where you consulted with, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but equivalent, I guess, on, on the Minnesota side, maybe in, in Winona County about, you know, how they run public safety systems there. And the fact that tower, you guys have towers in Wisconsin for the same purpose that this one would be in Minnesota. This site, you know, was obtained from the Army Corps. You know, it's already a tower site. And basically, they're using it for microwave backhaul primarily in the beginning to relay communications from other towers in Wisconsin back over the river and then shoot that microwave path across the river again to other sites and, and complete the network. And then this also provides a good coverage of those river valleys on the, on the Wisconsin side. So you could project, you know, across looking in rather than right on top and, and trying to project RF coverage down directly below it. So I think that's part of the reason. You know, I thought it was wrote up pretty well in the staff report in the summary of that, that discussion. But yeah, I, I guess, Logan, I don't know if you have additional things to say about, about the sighting or the network?
Good evening. This is Logan Zinsley here with the Wisconsin DOT. Yeah, Arlen, as, as Arlen described, one of the, the big reasons we were interested in acquiring that tower location was for the connectivity for our data backhaul system. So we could provide a redundant path for our, our data communications. But also so that if in the future we wanted to place radio communications equipment on that tower and have it, you know, broadcast into Wisconsin, depending on the radio device that the user was, was utilizing, whether it was a mobile radio, which has better transmit capabilities than say a portable on your hip. You know, we could, we could get, get coverage within the state of Wisconsin, you know, anywhere from, you know, five to 20 miles. So that, that is why we were interested in this location in Winona County.
Alrighty. Any, any other planning commission members have any other questions for the staff? Okay. Hearing none, I would like the petitioner now to speak on behalf of the petition. So I'm not sure which one of you two want to go, but.
As far as considering the petition, I, yeah, I guess, you know, the request is put forth for the DOT. I think, you know, the, the project is for the good of the public. You know, mainly in Wisconsin initially, but it is a public safety site that, you know, the state of Wisconsin would share with other public safety entities. You know, whether it be Winona County, state of Minnesota, you know, federal government agencies. So, you know, the, the tower site is already, you know, it's already a current tower site. They're not taking raw land or, or other farmland out of production to build a, a tower to serve the same purpose. The site is really set up for the intended use already with minor modifications. So, you know, we think this is a good project, you know, for good of the public and hope you approve the petition.
Okay, thank you. Does any planning commission members have any questions for Arlen?
Mr. Chair, this is Patrick. I have a couple. The last tower that was on there had guide wires. Seeing this tower is going to be taller. Are there any concerns about the soil stability and type of soil to, that need to be dealt with? As far as making it a, a sound structure for use for the decades to come? Are they anticipating any issues with that?
As far as soil stability, there's a, for every tower that's built, we have to do a geotechnical investigation. So there'd actually be soil borings completed, analyze the soil conditions. There's pretty much, any sort of soil condition can be handled, you know, with a foundation design. It's just the, you know, what that design looks like. You know, in this case, we are expecting probably shallow bedrock up there, clay. But, you know, we're not anticipating, or we know there won't be any, you know, marsh-type soils, peat, muck, things like that, that are really difficult to build on, that might require piles or, or, you know, deep drill piers, things like that. So, you know, soils are considered in the foundation design. I mean, we're not to that level yet, obviously. You know, first thing is to get the tower permitted. But, yeah, we have no belief that soils are going to impact the, you know, the design or layout of the tower.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to ask that question since there were guide wires on the last tower. And if there are any potential soil issues that, that you might encounter there. But if you feel confident about that as you move forward, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other planning commission members have any questions for the petitioner? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to open the public hearing.
So I move, Patrick.
Okay, Patrick made the motion.
Second, this is Kelly.
Kelly, Stanage seconded. There's been a motion, a second to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 Close. Okay, the public hearing is open. Anyone that wants to come and speak for or against this petition now is the time to speak up. So if anyone would like to speak for or against, please start making some noise so we can hear you. Anyone sees any hands flying or anything?
Not at the moment, Mr. Chair.
Nobody else is calling in or anything? Okay. Let me ask one more or another time here. If anyone wishes to speak for or against a petition, if please step forward or speak up or whatever. And state your name and address and what you'd like to say. If I'd opened the window, we could hear the crickets outside, I guess. That would be something to hear. Okay, third and final time, if anyone watches, wishes to speak for or against a petition, please make some noise now. I hear none, I see none. I need a mo-
I'll move to close the public hearings.
Second, second, Patrick.
Steve Jacob made the motion and Patrick to, to second it, to close the public hearing. Then a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 Close. Passed. Okay. Now, anyone have any questions from the planning commission? Anyone? Thoughts, concerns? Where's Kelly? Kelly, does your thing work today?
It does, I'm right here.
There we go.
I, excuse me, I will go ahead and move that we recommend this petition for approval. Adopt the findings of fact and conditions.
Alrighty. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Lynn Carlson.
Hey, Kelly Stanage made the motion and Lynn Carlson seconded it. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, we have to have a vote, because this is an official one. Steve Jacob.
Aye.
Kelly Stanage.
Aye.
Mike Flynn.
Aye.
Patrick Byron.
Aye.
Lynn Carlson.
Aye.
Arlie Herbert.
Aye.
Louis Ryman.
Aye.
Jordan Potter.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. That makes it unanimous. Congratulations, you can move on to the next step. Now you have to deal with the county board.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done with that one. Let's try Kay. You're up. Solar development.
Okay, let me switch screens around a little bit here. Hang on one second here. This one. So, uh, Mr. Chair and planning commission members, as we know from the number of solar projects that have come before you and, and then later before the county board, which has only temporarily abated because there's a couple more that might be in the pipeline soon. There's a lot of moving parts. We're fortunate that we have someone who has worked in the industry on the Board of Adjustment as the planning commission liaison, Jordan. In addition to that, there was a recent inquiry from one of the county's, kind of constituents about recycling. But there's also some other moving parts. So just for discussion purposes and to gain input on some things that you would like staff to do further research on, you know, which could lead to some expanded conditions and also change the fee schedule. I'm just going to present a few quick slides. I flushed them out just slightly, but I'm going to read everything on the screen for those of you that are, are joined by phone. So we can then continue to discuss. So the three discussion items, and then I think I maybe added a couple more things based on some input recently. Types and methods for financial surety, for decommissioning, conditional use permit fees, erosion control and more inspections. So those are just three items. To start with, financial surety. We currently use around 30,000. It's 30,000, it was less than that four years ago. Decommissioning costs right now can range from 50 to 100,000 for an eight to 11 acre site. If somebody walked away, would they walk away if they were only walking away from 30 grand? That's just a question. We have three methods. A letter of credit from bank, an annually renewable bond from a company that, that is contracted for, excuse me, my phone is still buzzing even though I muted it. And then escrow to put in an account that is released on an acceptable decommissioning and site restoration. Some counties have gone to only escrow accounts. Some counties have gone to a letter of credit from a Minnesota bank that they have to have a bank. from a Minnesota bank, that they have to have a bank branch in Minnesota in case something goes south. So those are a couple of things that, this is the current state. Next, the solar is currently evaluated as an interim use permit, some counties evaluate it, or rather as a conditional use permit, sorry, that's a typo. What I wanted to say was some counties review it as an interim use permit. The most staff time is much greater than a typical CUP or IUP, which is fine, we're happy to work hard on, on behalf of all petitioners, but it's almost disproportionate. So, one thought about the fee schedule is increasing a solar IUP, CUP fee, I meant to hyphenate that in a hurry today, I guess, starting in 22, 2022, from $450 to 850. $400 doesn't go too far in terms of staff time and we're not trying to create a profit center from it, but we would also like to transfer $100 per conditional use slash interim use permit fee for solar purposes to the SWCD. This, well, this emanated from a discussion at the county board level and it was something that Commissioner Jacob, while not maybe specifically suggesting $100, because I don't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner, but you're well aware of the work with the, the SWIP that we both do together, which is a great collaboration in the pollinator seed mix and so on. So that's something that, you know, behind the scenes that we were looking at, that we would want to put in the fee schedule sometime in the next few months as the budget for 2022 is prepared, if, if that seems like a good, good way to go. The Starwater Pollution Prevention Plan is an alphabet soup, SWIP. We have certified SWIP reviewers on staff, we have experienced SWIP reviewers on staff, as does the SWCD, but it's prepared by the solar company's civil engineering firm, much like the tower engineer that you saw tonight from WISDOT. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency approves it, the department and the SWCD, as I said, review it together, and, but sites erosion controls are responsibility of the developer's site manager, not the county and not the township. But if we see something, or we see that the SWIP, we can, we can go out and say, I want to talk to the developer, you know, who, the engineer that did the SWIP and do a site walk and say, why is the SWIP failing? Are the conditions of the SWIP being met and that kind of thing? So I just wanted to clarify that, because that was something that had come up in some questions. This is, this was an extra topic, density. Informally before the meeting started, Jordan Potter was talking a little bit about, and, and Mr. Chair, Mark Clark was talking about, are we sucking the oxygen out of the county when we permit the bigger permits? And then dairy farmers and folks that, you know, want the smaller arrays for their farms might be hitting up against a capacity wall, if you will. And since we are unable as staff to ascertain where capacities add on the lines, because we're not developers, Lou Overhug from our office has tried to get some answers in the past and, and it's a little bit difficult, because capacity is a moving target, it could be expanded upon if they discover that there's enough, there's enough demand, maybe if funds for expanding the infrastructure occur and so on. But it has also come up in some meetings between either informal discussions or else more formalized venues such as the county board and the planning commission, that some density overlays, regardless of line capacity, you know, may be something to, to talk about. So in certain areas. That came up maybe more recently with the Apple Blossom area, because all of a sudden three megawatts looks a whole lot more industrial than one megawatt.
Yes.
That is currently very well permitted and it could have been five megawatts for that matter. So, that, there's no prohibition in the ordinance and this hasn't been a topic of discussion. I will say though, that looking at this one, any evergreens that are shorter than four feet, which is the standard in the zoning ordinance, are now four feet and better, because we, we've been holding folks' feet to the fire a little bit more, we see something that's dead or blown over. So we have added some inspections, and this is, you know, an outgrowth of, of suggestions from the planning commission primarily, occasionally from the county board as well, to make sure that the projects are put in as promised. And I know that, Mr. Chair, that, you know, you've talked about it as well, our previous chair did too, and I want to assure you that staff does our very best to try to make sure that the conditions are, are met when you assign them, but if I was going to run around all day and look at all the conditions, I would need double the staff. So, we're doing our best, because it, there have been a lot of complaints generated. So, a landscape company came out recently and fixed some blowovers and rectified some sizes, because I slapped a tape on some and took some pictures, and they came out and fixed them, and soon, some trees that were inadvertently planted in, in a right of way will be repaired as well. So I just wanted to assure you that we are listening and I'm sure we'll, we'll hear more suggestions as we go. So, we're also seeing more improvements in the quality of the submissions, based on more rigorous reviews and use of Bowser standards. The landscaping and pollinator review gets more than one touch, it gets a touch from the SWCD and from the Planning and Environmental Services Department staff. So, we're feeling like the projects will look better and be easier to maintain for those property owners as well. So we're not just trying to achieve pie in the sky standards, but we're also trying to have a care toward future maintenance and we're always available to help with guidance in that behalf in the future. I just wanted to, this is an extra one, so I apologize to those on the phone, but it says Sterns County prime farmland and airport questions. So an example of one of the things that staff can do, there are about nine or 10 counties that are part of a spreadsheet that have different standards, and some of them are, some pretty good questions that they're asking, that we could tweak a separate solar CUP, IUP form to add. But one of them that Sterns County had, this is just an example of what staff could dig up for you. It states, if there are areas of non-prime farmland within one mile of an interconnection site, boy, I was doing this in a hurry, sorry, demonstrate a good faith consideration of those sites. So they have to show, hey, if there was a non-prime area within a mile of where your, your great interconnection spot was, did you look at it? Or if the project is within two miles of an airport, has an aviation analysis been completed? And we're pretty good about that, but those were just a couple of questions that I thought maybe, you know, we can tease out of some other counties too. So, those were just some of the items that have come up, both from the planning commission, the county board, as well as just in general. So I, I wanted to just kind of throw that out there, since we had a lighter night and, and there may be some additional input on things that you would like in the future.
Okay, thank you, Kay. One thing I'd like to say is just to make sure, you know, with the first thing you said about the decommissioning cost, I want to make sure the landowners are not stuck with a huge, you know, 20 years from now, it could be 100 grand or more to disconnect that, and, and, you know, that's what they're going to do, they'll just walk away and leave and it'll be up to the landowner to clean up, and that would be, we just need to make sure that does not happen. That's, how it doesn't happen, I don't know, but that's, that is my biggest fear of, of some of these companies, especially when they're traded and sold and bought constantly, is, you know, who's going to get stuck with it at the end? So does anyone have any questions for Kay?
Hey, this is Pat. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, Kay, this is Patrick. In Freeborn County and Marla County, they have a fair number of, of, like, I shouldn't say, I'm just thinking of the wind tunnels. Do you anticipate touching base with any, in any of the other counties maybe to the west of us, as you move along in this planning process?
Absolutely, and I grew up on the north end of Buffalo Ridge, so I know all about wind back in the early days.
Right, yes.
And, you know, and the potential impacts thereof, but we would actually look at, do a little bit of a survey on multiple counties, and we have a list of counties that we compare ourselves against, but we might expand out from that list, just because those that have had more solar arrays go in earlier. And there's questions with some of the earlier solar arrays that weigh 55 to 60 pounds per four by six panels, say, and now they weigh 45 to 50 pounds, and if it's 55 cents a pound to recycle, then you could be looking at an eight to 11 acre site, you know, maybe 100 grand, 150 grand. I don't know if anybody's financial surety is going up that high, but should it? So, yes, we'll definitely dig into some of those western counties. Thank you for the input.
Okay, thanks, Kay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question or comment for Kay as well. I really appreciate you doing this, because, you know, since last month with the, the car request, having multiple gardens, I started to feel like we were dealing with big business, we were dealing with, you know, big industry here. This wasn't just, you know, let's save the environment. But one thing that's kind of been in the back of my mind for over a year is, it's a terminology thing again, where when they, they plant the vegetation and do the soil erosion SWIP stuff, they, they are issued a certificate of completion, and in my mind, I'm thinking, well, it's not complete, because they're just planting at this point, it hasn't proven or grown or really, you know, exercised what sort of objective we're trying to achieve. So I don't know, it just seems like there, there needs to be a few more phases or steps with, with the actual, you know, how they, they deal with the land and the pollinating, pollinating and, you know, having vegetation develop on the land site, you know, certificate of development or certificate of planting. It just seems like certificate of completion might convey to the, the permit holder that, you know, they're done, they've, they've done their work and, and they've, they've satisfied all the requirements. So it's, it's a matter of semantics, but it's still something pressing in my mind.
Lynn, I think that's a very appropriate comment and, and a topic of conversation and, and further thought, because I think we've run into some already, where they planted it and, for whatever reason, it didn't take and, you know, it looked pretty horrible and erosion issues and that type of thing. So that's, that's a good point, really, it's just to piggyback on that.
Mr. Chair and planning commission members, so it's, that's, those are extremely great points, every, everything that everybody's said so far. What some counties have actually done is build in, you know, sort of layer that permit such that there's an inspection, not just on stray voltage, but there's an inspection at, at the time that it goes live, of the site in general, for the items in terms of the commissions, or, excuse me, the conditions set by the planning commission and, and approved by the board, when, when they're approved. But they also do one in three years and five years, and they build the price of the inspection right in. Again, back to not being a profit center, but it also just means that we schedule it instead of just waiting for a complaint from a township official saying, gosh, you know, stop by, the road is full of mud. And, and that's an unusual thing, and not to pick on that particular project, but that is a way that what, some counties have handled it, and so I'm glad you, you brought it up, and that is something that you folks could, you know, recommend to be done or added to the fees.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Lynn.
No, sorry, Riley. I was going to say, the other small thing is, you, you said there's not enough staff to help monitor, and that's huge. You know, the, the following up, ensuring compliance, I mean, on every level of government, that's just something that we've just not really built in, in our planning. But I would be willing, and I don't know if it could work out where there could be volunteers, you know, for the city or the county that, that assists, you know, that check on things and, you know, take pictures or just see how things are going. I don't know if there's any way we could do that, but, but, but I just wanted you to know, Kay, that, that people would be interested, I think, in helping police it.
Chair Clark, could I, could I speak to that staffing issue?
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I agree, it's a big burden on staff and, and I think when it, when it comes to these solar petitions, that the county board, you know, we want these to be good examples of, of what we can do with solar in Winona County in the future. Staffing clearly an issue, a big burden on staff. I think some of the tools that I believe that, as a planning commission, that we have our, at our disposal is, we can place conditions that would require the applicant to hire whatever independent contractor or whatever erosion control specialist is needed.
Engineer or whatever.
To, to make that a good application. We don't need to pass that burden on to the taxpayer and we don't need to pass it on to staff. We can say, that's up to us as a planning commission, to put conditions that put the burden back on the applicant, and if it becomes less profitable for the applicant, sorry, that's the cost of doing business. So, but, and maybe as long as I have the floor right now, thank you, Kay and planning department for your work on this. I, I know our, our solar ordinance really was updated not that long ago, but it's something that this planning commission spends a fair amount of time on, and it was, it was my request that planning department would come back to the planning commission, since the planning commission is the one that's, you know, we spend more hours on this than what the county board realizes, combined with the planning department working on the issues. I think if, if we're both creative and we think through from a business sense, I think we can make better applications, whatever we have to charge. If the SWCD needs to be involved in, in reducing erosion and there's a fee that they need, we can pass that right on to the applicant and say, hey, this is, this has got to be addressed and here's a condition. So, those are just a couple of my thoughts on some of those, those issues. I don't really want to see this be a bigger, be a bigger burden for the taxpayer, it could be a bigger burden for the, for the applicant if it's going to play out that way.
One, one quick thing, in addition to the zoning ordinance, we provide a packet, a solar policy packet to all the applicants now that we didn't do four years ago, and it's just snippets from the ordinance, it explains what the process looks like, you know, it's the exhibits that you need. So we're doing things on our end to see that we get better applications, that they tick more of the boxes in a more thorough and professional way, and we can, then, this is a living document that as we receive guidance from the planning commission and the board, or we find things out that, you know, Eric and Megan and Lou say, gosh, you know, this is a recurring issue, or the township officials or, or the SWCD says, you know what, let's just add this, this little tidbit to them so that we get better and better looking projects that are more acceptable to the public and that are more successful. That should be a win for everyone.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Riley.
Kay, I've got a couple of questions for you. Steve, also, I like your idea on doing it that way for the applicants, for the inspections that happen. And I have seen a few of the solar areas where the trees have died, you know, within a year or two and they're still dead, things like that. Another thing is, one, Kay, Kay that-
Send me pictures.
Send you pictures?
Yeah.
Another thing, Kay, is, you know, you were talking about the applications going from 450 to 850, and I've been out of it, you know, for a year or two here. Is there a set size, you know, that you don't need an application? You know, like for the ordinary person that is going to build one or buy, put a solar panels up and maybe sell a, a small percentage of it back, you know, to help pay for it? Do they need a permit for that and would they get charged, you know, like the 850?
To answer your question about a year and a half, two years ago, although time flies, I've been here four years now, those small, those fees for those smaller arrays were eliminated. So what we're talking about is large solar arrays, one megawatt and larger.
Okay, okay, that's what I was-
Eliminated the fees for the small solar altogether from the fee schedule.
Okay, and I'll see if I can get you some pictures.
All right, thanks. Because I, I know I've sent a couple letters out, but maybe my, my writing style- Because I know I've sent a couple of letters out, but maybe my writing style is not intimidating. So maybe we could ratchet things up just a little bit because we do want the sites to look good as they have promised to do so to the county.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chair? Just for qualification, from what Kay just mentioned. So I had understood a month ago when we were discussing the car proposal that the capacity to sell the energy back to Excel was being, you know, we're running out of space. I remember Lou saying we were going to do 25 solar gardens and we were up to 22 or 23. And I had understood that if we reach that capacity, then a small farmer who was interested in setting up a small, you know, project would not be able to sell back to the utility. And I had assumed that it would be just, you know, when you want your own off the grid kind of solar. But now it sounds like I may have been confused by that.
It's funny because before you joined the discussion, and I hope I'm not stepping on your toes, Mr. Chair, but that exact topic was under discussion because it did happen with one of the permitted large solar arrays. And then the same property owner wanted to go back and do a more personal, business oriented solar array and there wasn't capacity. I wish I had a crystal ball about what Excel was going to do or not do or where the capacity's at. But, you know, we have commissioner representatives to the AMC and they have access to state agencies that, you know, in a department we do not have. But once a year, we do have the ability to provide sort of a wishlist, hit list. And even we had a Zoom meeting with state senators, state representatives this year on things that are really important topics that we hear a lot from the property owners in the county. And so that's one of them. It's just, it's a bit opaque at this point, let's put it that way.
Okay.
We don't know where that's going, if that's recognized in some things in the works. It'd be nice to have just a little bit more information coming down from Excel or from the state agencies for certain.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Kelly.
I'm sorry, I missed the conversation that happened before the meeting, but I would be supportive of reserving capacity for farms who want to implement solar. But given that we don't really know what the capacity is, how can, does anyone have any ideas how to do that?
Well-
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that a little.
But my idea would be is to know how much capacity they have and then limit the industrial size to like 80% of that capacity and savings like 10 or 20% or a percentage of the capacity, you know, at the time. And then if they add capacity, then you can add some more of the bigger ones or something.
Well, and if I'm- Staff has said correctly, they're having a really hard time getting Excel Energy to tell us what the capacity actually is. Is that correct, Kay?
That's correct, but Jordan, I know that, Mr. Chair, he was going to speak and he does work in the industry. He's got two jobs. He's a hardworking guy.
Yep, he's up next. We're waiting for you guys to get done talking.
Shut up then.
All right, Jordan, you're up.
Well, so the capacity varies depending on where you're at. And it's up to the utility to increase that capacity as we move along here, whether it's equipment on their end or more loads coming onto the grid. But I think they're trying to avoid a lot of costs on their end with upgrading equipment. And if they can just approve these larger gardens, then they don't have to sort through as many applications. They maybe don't have to worry about upgrading equipment as fast. They're kind of, they're making it as easy as they can for themselves. But I can, Kay, if you want, I can give you a contact for a guy at MyEnergy sometimes. If you have any questions on that area of our county, he's really, really knowledgeable and super good at answering questions.
Well, both from a staff standpoint and for bringing information back to the decision makers, if we're on a fact finding mission, we would like to be as well informed as possible toward writing the best staff reports we can for you folks.
Well, what you've got so far is definitely looks good to me. I think we're headed in the right direction with pretty much everything.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, I have something back to the erosion part. And I mean, I live right on a creek and this year it's just beautiful because it doesn't rain, so there's no erosion. And also farm, so I know what erosion is all about sometimes. And the weather we're having right now, where you get a half an inch of rain a day, if you're finishing and doing your soil work and you got it seeded down, that's just perfect. And if you did all of your soil work around these gardens and you get a four inch downpour in two hours, that's going to make gullies. I don't care how much work you have to do. So, you know, the weather has something to play, luck has something to play. But right, it's defining out if there was that problem is to make sure it is fixed. And yes, that's sometimes requires people, you know, staff. Sometimes it requires just people driving by and seeing it, you know, an erosion gully there. Anyway, that's all I have on that. If no one else has any questions on that, I'd like to hear a board of adjustment update from Jordan.
I can do that. So earlier today, we voted on, well, we considered three petitions. The first was Ronald and Jane Schritz in Dresbeck. And we approved that item, which was to allow a new dwelling 48 feet from the center line of River View Drive and five feet from a side yard. And then we considered two petitions for Mark Daly in regards to a new house. The first being a variance to allow a building site on class two soil type, which we approved. The second petition was to allow a building 650 feet from a registered feedlot rather than 1,000 feet. And we had a lot of trouble with that one and we tabled it until next month.
Kay, anyone have any questions for Jordan? I hope not, but okay. Steve, you're up.
Thanks, Mark. The county board approved the Glen and Sue Law Retail Business out of the the container that they were going to run a business out of. So that's approved. The Henry Yoder Dog Kennel, we approved. There is the Craig Spees dwelling on less than 40 acres, approved. And then the Chelsea Low Campsite up in Hellba Township that was approved. So it's like those are all moving ahead.
Okay. Anybody else have any? Uh-oh, cuckoo clock's going off. Anyone else have anything to bring forth tonight? If not, I will adjourn the meeting. How's that sound? Or do we need an official?
I moved to adjourn.
Second, Patrick.
Lynn moved and Patrick second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I couldn't listen to you if you opposed. All right, thanks for all for attending. We'll see you in person next month.
Awesome blossom, way to go.
Well, let's hope so.
Is that the plan? We will meet in person? Is that what the plan is, Kay?
Well, I think we will all like that, but we'll have to see what administration and personnel have to say because of either distancing or, you know, whatever CDC guidelines are still in place at that point. But that would certainly be all of our goal, I think.
I'm being optimistic here.
I intend to be at the boardroom there, so.
There we go.
Good night, all.
Thank you for a good meeting.
Thanks for attending.